President, you're live on Facebook. Here we go. Hey, I call to order the Tuesday, October twenty second, two thousand and twenty four public meeting of the Jenkin Town Borough Council. At this time, we will. Senator Malice, Mayor is not president of the meeting. Right or Councilor Bartlett, do you mind? I'd say wish we should still flag of the United. Councilor Khalil, Councilor Cathy, Councilor Bartlett, here, Councilor Narva, Councilor Ballard, your Councilor Connors, here, Councilor Saltizia.
Here.
Councilor Panko. With Councilor Panko is.
Please for hand.
Uh, Councilor Lewis. Uh, Councilor Spindler, here, Councilor Bruno.
Here.
Councilor Marla.
Here.
Uh, Madam Delac, please report. Warrow. Um, approval minutes dated September twenty fifth.
They were not prepared for the evening.
I'm assuming.
The minutes were not prepared for the.
Okay, alright. That's right. Approval payroll, uh, Council Valley.
Um, I'm thinking for the entire time move for approval payroll dated October fourth and October eighth, it even on two hundred and six thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-four cents. And invoices totaling, uh, we don't have that number.
There was a motion last. Here you go, straight here.
Uh, I'm sure. The voices totaling two hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-eight cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Uh, Madam Delac, please move forward to unanimous vote. Uh, I will now move on to public comment. Um, if you do have public comment, um, we would appreciate it if you just gave us your name and address for the record. So total comment is now.
I have a comment. So my name is Taylor Casey Poseidon. I live at Beaver Hill. And I could be this following remarks. Good evening for all council members. Let's get straight to the point and be very frank about it. Tonight, you're holding a petty ceremonial vote to support the police chief. I must be clear. This vote is nothing more than a sham. The officers, through the right of their union, took a vote of no confidence in their chief. They made their statements clear and they gave their reasons. And your response? Slapping them in the face with this meaningless political stunt. And do you know the message you're sending? I hope so. You're not just ignoring the voices, the people actually doing this job. You're contributing to their hopped up work environment. At this point, we all know this issue isn't about saving money and it's not about providing better police services. It's not. It's personal and you've made it blatantly obvious. So don't even bother saying otherwise. You've made it clear, you're willing to go absurd lengths to push this agenda despite no neighboring even wanting to touch this dumpster fire of a situation. And it's the officers who protect this borough and their families who are paying the price. Now, on the topic of authority, one of you had the gumption to confront me over concerns about transparency and Jenkin Town Matters. Let's get something straight. Jenkin Town Matters was formed in direct response to your underhanded moves to disband the police. I've been open about my involvement with this group because I think our community deserves to know what's really going on here. And yes, I've advocated for transparency Jenkin Town Matters because that's what the community has asked for. But I like to clarify one thing from earlier, which I don't think I'm allowed to do since you did catch me off guard. But I want to send a message to all of you tonight. Don't think for a second that Jenkin Town Matters is obligated to bow to your hypocrisy. You know who we are. We're the ones attending council meetings. Sending you emails, sending over rights and no requests, you've gotten them from. So if you didn't know who we were, you wouldn't have known who to confront. So let's be real, you're not asking for transparency. You're just looking for names to drag through the mud. You want the easy way out and the ability to point fingers and say, see, it's just the same old rabble rouser is making noise. But then here's the truth. It's not the case. Well, Jenkin Town Matters doesn't owe you, 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 anything. We answer to the community, not your fragile egos. Now, I'm about finished, but I want to close by saying, go ahead, taking your meaningless vote. But don't think for a second that anyone here doesn't see exactly what's going on. You can silence us, you won't discredit us, and we're not backing down. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other public comment? Yes.
I'd like to follow up. She was saying regard to residents being the last to mount. Why doesn't council and the mayor share with all of us and the residents exactly what these ten men and women did on the police force that causes such animosity? Because truly, if this was a budgetary situation, why would there be such going backs and forth? And why did these ten people do a vote of no confidence to have each and every one of you spoken to the officers, all ten of them, and find out why this was a unanimous vote? Instead, all of you are going to have a vote of confidence tonight, but none of you are the employees as the chief as a boss. So what's the meaning of that? And I see that you're going to, uh, you know, speak for the, about this, this was a unanimous vote. And I would think that each of you individually and not collectively like a hive would want to speak to all the officers just to see where the problem is, why they feel the way they do. Because certainly, that's not too much to ask of our council that be elected, is it? To find out why the men and women that served this community faithfully since I, since I've been here for fifty years and we've been able to afford the police and then to tell me and others that they're half of the budget when we final grade to know when the sunshine out and find that they're like about thirty-seven percent of your budget. So it's constant and she's absolutely right. The barrage of vitriol that we get online and personally, it's unbelievable. I guess somebody handed all politicians this year the key to the kingdom to say whatever they feel like to anyone, regardless of the fact that we're voters. And your, we're, your constituents, you're supposed to be representing us in each and every ward, not representing whatever grouping thing is going on here. And Mr. Mayor, finally, I just want to say one thing, kind of disappointed in you because you let the news carry this vote of no confidence out into the world before anybody in the town was notified of what was going on. And here lies the problem that we're all really concerned about. Transparency. Why are so many things going on in this town that none of us know about? We're the ones dealing out the tax money every year to pay for all of this. And I think as parents, I know what's happening in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes.
Or Lisa, one fifteen Cedar Street. I understand where all the people from Jenkin Town Matters is coming from, but they do not speak for me and they do not speak for other people within the borough.
Thanks. Is there any other public comment?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes. That was for Seaman Beaver Hill. So I'm sorry I did not prepare a read of three months. But there were members of the council, Mr. Mayor. I understand that one man police patrols are now in the debt. And I further understand that that was one of the reasons for the no coming as well. That the police department, uh, really fell. So with that, I wanted to, uh, basically spread my name. I should, I can get shared by many people. And the view is that, uh, I mean, it doesn't take a police professional to send two man patrols, my safer than one man patrol. And, uh, by taking this step, I think you made our police officers less safe. I think you can do more wise. And I believe you can be always less safe. Thank you.
Thank you. There any other public comment? Yes.
Alexandra Hansen, Beaver Hill. I'm going to read excerpts from an open letter to the community from the family members of our police officers. I ask this may be a part of the record of this meeting and I do have copies for all of you elected officials. To the members of the Jenkin Town community, being a police officer means making relationships with members of the community you serve. It means holding someone's hand as you deliver news with empathy of the loss of a loved one. It means seeing a child in an abusive situation and being a safe haven for that little person. It means performing CPR on someone in the middle of a medical emergency until an ambulance arrives. Being a police officer entails de-escalating a volatile domestic situation. It means checking in on businesses during the day and responding to building alarms to make sure everything and everyone is safe. It's getting out of your car to join a pickup game of basketball because you want to be represent something more to kids than just a threatening presence. In today's world, being a police officer means you must keep your head on a swivel because of ambush style attacks on officers around the country. It too often means being hated simply because of the uniform you wear. When news broke earlier this year of the borough's plans to dissolve the police department, it only confirmed what our officers had been hearing in the great time. Shortly after their new chief's hiring, our guys would come home and talk about it on big old rumors of their department being taken over, never sure they could leave them. Most of these officers are the breadwinners or the only source of income for their families. Some work two jobs. In addressing the possible dissolution of the JPD, the chief said in multiple interviews that he recognized the human element to all of this and that should the JPD dissolve, he'd help to find other employment. He did not mention that many of these guys are too young to retire but too old to move to another department, meaning they would take a substantial pay cut, tens of thousands of dollars to work anywhere else. Some of these guys won't have their pensions vested for another few years. It means they will have nothing to show for the commitment they made to your community. Perhaps the scariest of all the news is the fact that one man patrols are now in effect for certain shifts. It's easy for Jenkin Town to walk around town believing that it's a little bubble of a community where nothing ever happens. We see things differently. Imagine the fear and anxiety our days and nights will hold knowing they're out there on a solo patrol. Respectfully, please refrain from sharing with us the Abington is right next door speech. We don't need our guys waiting five or more minutes for backup from a neighboring department to arrive if they're even able to. Policing anywhere alone is completely unsafe. We all have seen how one wrong step can lead to actions with reverberating consequences. Just this past June, Philadelphia Police Officer Jamie Roman was murdered simply because he pulled over the wrong car. Single officer control should not only increase the risk to our officers and the lives and property of all those who live here, but they also increase the likelihood our officers might need to use lethal force to diffuse a situation. Everyone's safety is decreased with one man patrols, the officers, the offenders, and innocent community members. We urge the community, please communicate with your elected officials. They have the power to make positive changes for your community and the police department. Communicate with them how unsafe one man patrols are and how you desire the JPD to remain intact and fully staffed. With appreciation, family members of the Jenkin Town Police Department.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, I feel as though the upcoming.
What's your, what's your name, sir?
Oh, sorry. My name is Mark, uh, Simon. I live in Beaver Hill. Uh, I just wanted to say that I feel as though the upcoming vote further locks the council into an adversarial position with the police department. And I again urge the council to change course on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Uh, Madam Delac, are you aware of any public comment by way of social media or by way of email?
Let the relevance of reading and stuff that's in your mouth.
Okay.
We're set now.
Okay, thank you. So, um, Mr. Walco, um, I'd like to go out of order and go right to the, to the vote.
As long as you'd like to have the motion to amend the agenda, move that out of order, that would be appropriate as long as it was voted on by the board to some of the council.
So I move. I move to go out of order. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Delac, please move forward to unanimous vote. So I'd like to move to the order of business, um, number two, uh, Police Chief Thomas Scott, vote of support. I make a motion that Jenkin Town Borough Council voice our vote of confidence in and support for Police Chief Thomas Scott due to his ongoing efforts to increase accountability, productivity, and professionalism within the Jenkin Town Police Department. I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions?
Yes, I just want to thank you Scott for addressing the issue of professionalism, for caring about the community. This community owes you such a debt of gratitude that I cannot, that if only they would take the time to know. Thank you for all that you have done. And I'm so proud to been the vote, one of the votes to have said, yes, let's hire Chief Scott. You're one of the best things that ever happened to Jenkin Town. Thank you.
Um, I also just want to make a quick comment. I also was on the hiring committee with, uh, Council Khalil. And something that we talked about a lot, something that I have talked about with many residents who have come to talk to me about this whole, I think the questions and the comments that's also had tonight is that we knew during the hiring process, we had a major ship to right and we knew that we had to find the right person who would be strong enough to do that. And Chief Scott has gone above and beyond. I'm very happy that we have him on board.
Any other?
Yeah, I would add that this is the process that's going on since, um, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, at the beginning of the snowboard. Uh, I agree completely that Chief Scott was the correct hire for the borough. And, uh, so he's worked as heavy as to, uh, make the changes that are necessary in the borough.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Councilor Bruno.
I, uh, was one of the people on the hiring committee and Chief Scott has my complete support. And I want to say that as part of the process of hiring committee, we did often to interview each police officer individually and approximately half of them chose to talk with us. Um, so we did get, you know, we opened the process to the police officers to get their input. And quite frankly, less than fifty percent responded.
Yay, may I make a comment?
Yes, please. Uh, yes, Council Panko.
Okay. I just want to say that I also, uh, am in support of Chief Scott and that we have been very careful to to, um, ask Chief Scott to work on accountability. Um, we are in a contract year and it has been a very difficult, um, negotiation. There have been personnel issues that we cannot discuss in the public for fear of lawsuits. And so I think this council has worked very hard to be respectful of the officers and of the police force as a whole. And we very much appreciate the work that Chief Scott has been doing to, as Counselor Saltizia mentioned, to right the ship. So I want to express my support as well.
Yeah, thank you, President Connors. Um, I wanted to add that, um, the actions that were depicted in the letter from the PBA portrayed Chief Scott as operating independently, um, and in a vacuum. And to Counselor Ballard's point, he was specifically tasked with jobs related to the police department. He has done them. He is doing them. They are at the direction of the borough. They are not his actions. And we support them.
Thank you.
I may just also point some out. The things that Chief Scott has had to order, unfortunately. Can you imagine having to order his, his, uh, his officers to patrol traffic? By that I find the most disturbing. When people talk and scream, whether it's Facebook or, uh, or emails, we had two individuals get killed on Old Jerk Road. Right? That, that is real too. Did you ask the officers? Excuse me, excuse me. Uh, you had your time to chat, talk, right? This chief ordered them to do it. Did you talk to the officer?
Public comments is a public comment.
The opportunity to speak to Chief, uh, to Chief Scott, good, good. And so you'll know that what he has done has, has directly improved the safety of this community. Use new rap. What he has done has made sure has made sure that there are people actually working. I am not lying here. I am not exaggerating. This man has saved this town. That's all I'm here to tell you for this.
Thank you, Alex. Is there any other comment from council? Okay, hearing none. Um, I'm going to remind. I see, I see.
Really, now you know what I wanted to wait when you're ready to call for the vote.
Okay.
I want to do it when you're ready to call for the, so.
Well, that would be the time because it's.
Alright, because, um, I want to be the first to stand up in honor of the chief. Send with the vote of the. That's, that's how I'm showing my, my vote. So if I may.
Of course, of course. And I would like to join Council Marla and I will stand.
Oh, all in favor?
That's my security.
Aye.
That's my, that's my vote. And appreciate it.
Uh, Madam Delac, please record.
And, and I respect, I respected everybody in the audience and I hope that they respect the way we are right now. And by laughing that I was not.
I think so.
Uh, Madam Delac, yeah, for the unanimous vote. Okay, I'm going to go back to reports, um. We have, uh, there's now Mark Fickertail is actually here for, uh, for the notes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry, our report's been filed. I have a couple of items on the order of business. I'll wait to address that if there's any questions at that time. Um, so I'll just keep mine short. Um, we continue to assist the borough manager with, um, ongoing land development inspections and oversight. Um, and we're working to identify and find a, um, thorough wide trajectory improvement project that would be suitable for upcoming grant application. And I will quit drop the following measures involved.
Thank you. Um, Public Works Department, uh, Foreman Riggins is not with us, but I'm sure Madam Delac will tie that into a good report. Uh, Solicitor's Report, uh, Mr. Johnson is not with us, but, uh, Mr. Walton. Solicitor Walton.
Thank you, President. Um, I did speak with Mr. Hitchens, uh, who's on vacation, uh, with his family this week. Apologize that he could not be here. He, he reported that, uh, it was a typical month. Uh, assisting the borough staff and council with legal matters that would arise gave the indication that he makes a statement generally, uh, each month in that regard. And, uh, that would be the same thing at this time.
Thank you. Right, uh, Mayor.
Um, yep, not too much tonight. I, I don't want to put Counselor Bartlett on the spot, but I think there's possibly some changes in the timing for the pumpkin.
Put it on Facebook, they're waiting. Three, the pumpkin drop on November third will not be at three o'clock until two thirty because the football game, the eagle.
Oh.
And, you know, yeah, moved earlier initially, so. But bring your rotten pumpkins.
Sorry, because Mayor Learn was going to be the.
I'm just gonna say, where does this stick?
Uh, that's all.
I think I read that one, right? Back then. Uh, Police Chief's report, Chief Scott.
Thank you, President Connors, and, uh, thank you to all the council members here tonight. I appreciate your support and I will continue to work hard to make sure that we get the right things done. Um, a couple of things to add to my report that I presented to the committee. Um, I know Madam Delac's going to talk about parking, so I'm not going to take his, 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 his report.
Thank you.
Um, a couple of things are going on that obviously it's homecoming week with Jenkin Town, uh, School District. Um, we will have, uh, increased presence for not only the, uh, alumni night or they're calling it a tailgate slash, um, pep rally. Uh, that's Thursday night and then also for the homecoming game on Friday night. They have, uh, six members of the alumni are going to be inducted into the Hall of Fame. So, um, we're, we're going to make sure we have people, uh, present. Uh, that is also because of some issues that they've had with, uh, at the, at the events, uh, with some of the crowd. Um, so they want to make sure that, um, they have safe events for both, both Thursday and Friday night. Uh, so we've already talked with the superintendent. I attended their, uh, their board meeting last night and, uh, we discussed that and we're going to make sure that we, we provide the safest environment for the, the attendees, so. Other than that, um, I don't really have much unless you have a question.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Chief Scott. Uh, Manager's Report, uh, Manager La.
Thank you, President Connor. Uh, my report is provided in paper. It was put in your packet today, so it'll be provided in that supplemental uh, package that you send out, the things that weren't electronically available at the time of posting of that, uh, package. I would just want to cover a couple of things real quick and I could answer any questions that anybody might have. The two thousand and twenty-five budget process continues. The first public budget meeting was held last Wednesday to sixteenth and it covered the O one general fund, which is the largest fund in our budget. It's known as the operating fund. Everything operates out of that fund. Basically, the public works, the administration and the police department. So it's an important fund. Our next budget meeting is on the twenty ninth, Tuesday night. It's going to cover several funds. I want to run through them real quick. The O two streetlight fund, the, uh, O three fire protection, O four fire apparatus, O five library, O eight sewer, O nine solid waste, ten ambulants, eighteen street tags, twenty debt service. Then we're going to circle back to O one if, um, if there's any time left in the meeting.
In terms of six, right?
It's, it's a six o'clock meeting, that's. Um, future businesses. This month, we worked with future businesses coming into town. We worked with the, uh, the Jamaican restaurant that's going in one eleven York. They brought their, their final plans in, so we went through those. There's a couple of comments on them, but they'll be moving forward. He hopes to open within a couple of months.
This is the Jamaican restaurant?
Yes, um, I might not pronounce it right. It's M O B A Y. It's similarly been in Abington, uh, on six eleven and they're going to move into one eleven. There's a coffee cafe shop going in one of the commercial uh, spaces in five oh one when that building opens up with the apartments upstairs. Coffee cafe in the bottom, Black Nest. Has opened up at seven oh seven, which is, uh, it's, it, it comes from, um, Sparrow and Hawk, which was up on the corner of the street.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it comes from that. Jasmine, Yan, School of Dance went in four hundred York. We had a wellness and aesthetic go in the three hundred York. We met with a developer today that's putting the, the stores together that used to be Port of Oswald's that run down West Avenue. He has several um, prospects of new food places and a couple are pretty darn exciting. Some of them are pretty darn exciting. Uh huh, yeah, um. One of them's returning to town. It has been gone. It looks like she's coming back to town. And then as the chief alluded to, I wanted to talk about parking for a minute. Our holiday parking hours come up and people are asking if this transition is going to affect that. It definitely will not. The holiday parking goes into effect on Thanksgiving. There'll be no charge for parking in the municipal lots or on street meter spaces on Saturdays and Sundays to help the businesses uh, as well as after six P M. So there's no charge for parking in those days or times. Um, as far as parking management. As far as parking management, we wanted to. We got this, we, we, we're putting the ordinance together on parking, until that's approved, it won't. It's not an approved ordinance, but we have the authority to put in temporary measures on the parking. And we've been discussing them as we've been progressing on this. I just wanted to cover them with council, so you're aware of what we're putting in place in temporary measures, now you're. Very aware of the twenty-minute spots they're going out here on Summit, there's five of them going on Summit to help the businesses out here. Uh, we've come up with a plan, and there, we'll have a map that we put online with it on West Avenue. Uh, there's currently four spots, two of them are on mark. For unloading or twenty-minute spaces. And, uh, we're, we're changing that to four twenty-minute spots. Uh, in the bumpouts between what I would call the Breezeway and Johnson Street, if you come off your. There's four spots, they're all gonna be twenty-minute, no charge for parking. We have four, uh, food places now, including the White Horse. That would utilize that for pickup, and we have three or four other food places going in on that street. Uh, the people we spoke to were very excited about that and thought it would be a, a nice, uh. Nice addition to the transition to the digitized parking payment. There's, in addition to that, when you get to the six hundred block of West, there's two spots. They exist now, but they'll be marked, uh. They're marked now, but they'll be marked with new signage. And one is at, uh, six seventeen. And the other is at the post office, in front of the post office. In addition to those twenty-minute spots, there's three on Lidl. That are next to, um, they're at the last bump out on Lidl, they would serve the businesses on Lidl. There's all three of those, uh, businesses, you have, uh, now, right now you have Velvet Sky, you have. Rick's Hoagie, and you have Olive Lucy, who would have been negatively affected by the. The transition to the digitized parking, we're thinking this twenty-minute parking will be great. For the customers, for those businesses there to be able to pick up their goods. And I know Rick says a lot, they, they park in Lidl Street now to run in and get their, their food, so. You get the people off the street, they'll serve both those purposes. The, the last thing is the parking enforcement hours. And that was, uh, eight P M, eight A M to six P M. And that's something that, uh, we wanted to go to on the, on the new ordinance, and we would like to put that in place now. For several reasons, but, uh, the chief and the parking enforcement have been talking to the restaurants, they think it will help with their dinner crowd. And, uh. Quite frankly, it can start that time of day, and it's tough to enforce, and it's just not a good situation, so. Uh, we would like to put that in place with the twenty-minute spots as we go through this transition.
We vote on it tonight?
It's, it's not on the agenda, you don't have to vote on it, we, we've already talked about it at our parking meetings, we talked about putting it in place. I was just informing council so that you know that we're putting it in place as a temporary measure while we're working on the ordinance. The, the last thing is on Park Mobile, the transition is ongoing. As you know, council voted to transition from the coin-operated meters to the digitized payment. Uh, we expect that to go before the kiosk change to digitize by a couple weeks. Neither will be changed until we get all our signage in and installed, it'll happen at the same time, so it's properly marked. We still expect a couple week transition after it's up, where parking enforcement will be out. Uh, helping people, assisting people, learning how to, uh, use the digitized system. Rather than just flipping a switch and saying, you know, you're in trouble now if you don't know how to do it, so. We're gonna have a transition, an education, uh, uh, factor to. And that's all I have in my report, well, I have more in my report, but that's all I wanted to highlight, if anybody has anything. Counselor Lewis?
Um, sorry, well, she raised her hand for it.
Well, Council goes before me.
Well, just quickly, um, when you said the transition to your proximity, when would that be like? It sounds like around December.
It'll probably, it'll be in November.
November?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, and that kind coincides with the holiday season, um, you know, I think that's. S- sounds like that's. People need to know about.
The, the issue that you're dealing with now is the kiosks are s- they're past their limit. They're, like, one was broken down today, they spent three hours trying to fix it, and people are just angry. They're trying to pack, they're broke, and they can't get in to do their business, and. The parking meters, I'd say a third of them are not inside the housing because they're broke, and, um. You know, we, we got quotes on the meters, it's right under thirty thousand dollars if you replace all the meters. But then you have the issue with the coins, uh, the unwrapped coins. So, the transition should happen as soon as it can, at this point now, that's been voted on. But yeah, we're looking at, at November, we don't wanna rush into it, but we wanna have everything in place. We developed a webpage for the website, we had it live for a day, just to make sure all the bugs were worked out of it. It's, it's, uh, it's all educational, it has all buttons on it, exactly how to walk through things, you learn how to do it, um. It's a real nice page, it's a widget on the left side, it says Parking Mobile.
It's a, it's a, you might also be seated, maybe it's the classic thing, if you have some flyers, because some people don't. Think of the website, but if it was on the next, you know, attached to the kiosk, you know, just. It, it wouldn't increase litter too much, but, you know, uh.
They could put a flyer in the kiosk.
Yeah, you know, help people know what's, what the transition is and what they should expect.
We're good at posting signs on the kiosks, if you haven't noticed.
I've walked everywhere.
We'll make sure, and, uh, and, and George, George and I actually talked about, um. Making, uh, a- and, and our parking enforcement are more than interested in trying to make sure that everybody transitions without much problem, so. We may, um. If you can imagine, we actually gave them roast quarters because people were struggling to have quarters to put in the machine, so. We would give them that, you know, for change for a dollar, if you ever put it in, so, we, we think that. Even printing out flyers to be able to give out instructions, I think would be really beneficial to people.
Yeah, thanks, um, it's a small enough borough that, and the area is small enough that. Just making people know that we're trying to make them aware of not only the change, but just how it's gonna better.
It's just, uh, National Act, you wanna mention the, the, the party?
Yes, there, good point, thank you. November seventh, at seven o'clock here at Borough Hall, we're having our second parking meeting. It will focus on the permit parking. Our last meeting was two hours, we tried to spend about a half hour on each subject, there was four subjects. That was the last one. It was obvious that that could have had its own meeting, so we scheduled the own meeting as we said we would that night. So it's, uh, November seventh. And I believe that could be a Thursday night. Like, Thursday night.
At seven.
At seven, seven to seven.
And, and just to reiterate, um, the, the issues with the coins of the bank.
Yes.
Just, if you can give it a, a reason why we're making this change, it's not just that everything's broken, but also. The banks are no longer taking coins.
Yes, they, it's, it's not that they're not no longer taking it, they're not counting it.
They had notified us they were gonna end counting it at the end of the year, but then they. In September, they notified us that they were stopping September fifteenth. Like a day or two before that, that they, they, uh, notified us. That's all I answered.
Alright, thank you, Manager Lott, uh, moving on to the order of business. How Maureen suggests, um, I apologize, Maureen, because you have something.
You were, um, talking about the budget meeting coming up.
Where does the what? We're gonna send you an invitation to appear that night, for twenty-nine.
Wait, await your formal extension. Yeah, we said, but.
Yeah, we're gonna send an invitation to the library, to J Y A.
I saw it last week, I didn't see the J Y A C, but I saw the library, I know last year we got one doing, um.
You're not altering that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Um, moving on to the order of business, uh. Number one on the agenda, Resolution twenty, twenty-four dash twenty-four, America two fifty P A. I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-four, supporting the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States Semi. Win Centennial. I have a motion and a second, are there any comments or questions?
Comment?
Yes.
Just to reiterate that this is a support, but it is, there's no financial commitment attached to this at all.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Uh, Manager Lott, please record a unanimous vote, uh, we've already done number two, I'll move on to number three. Uh, Council Ballard, and I believe this needs to be tabled.
If I make a motion to table this matter until the Borough hears back from the, uh, Chagertown P B A on their desire to participate in improvement.
I have a motion and a second, are there any comments or questions? Uh, all in favor? Any opposed? Manager Lott, please record a unanimous vote, and number four on the agenda, Council Ballard.
I make a motion to make final payment to jury constructions, as per the engineer's recommendation, at the amount of ninety-seven thousand. Three hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Second. I have a motion and a second, are there any comments or questions?
I, I should have mentioned that this is, uh, the final payment for the twenty eighteen D C E D theater of All Night Street. Flood mitigation grants, uh, that hopefully will address a lot of the, uh. Street flooding that we have, very heavy race storms.
Thank you.
Number five. We didn't vote.
The most fell in favor? Any opposed? Uh, Manager Lott, please record a unanimous vote. Uh, number five, I guess that's me. Um, I make a motion to award the contract, Albert G. Kipoloni and son, Chipolini, sorry.
That's I see, uh.
The apparent low bidder in the amount of one hundred ninety-six thousand, five hundred fifty-five dollars. To waive the R C O review waiting period and to authorize the insurance of the notice to the season. I have a motion and a second, are there any comments or questions?
Jay, I just wanna tell you that I'm actually here, and thank you for making that motion, and go ahead with the vote.
Yeah, I apologize.
No, she's got one coming up still.
Okay, alright, you still got one coming, so. So where was it tonight?
Ready for a vote.
Favor? Any opposed? Uh, Manager Lott, please record a unanimous vote. Uh, number six, uh, Council Saltesia.
Okay, we're talking about the ninety-six Spartan Pumper again. Um, so I can give you a little update as to why we're back, we're talking about it again, um. At our last meeting, we had, we had asked for Taylor. To clarify that the fifteen thousand dollars that they were requesting at the, that it was a deposit. To do the quote, and that whatever was used, not used, whatever, we would get back. And so we asked to get clarification on that. We received communication back from K L R, from Taylor, that. It was their understanding that, um, they were to just tear down the truck and come up with a firm number for parts and repairs. Uh, we started the process under the direction from you, meaning the fire department, that a check was to be delivered for the deposit when the check arrived. The initial deposit, so that fifteen thousand dollars, was to cover the cost of labor, labor to tear down and make repairs as we could. With parts available and finalize a list for next steps. With that being in the process now, and the borough, um, asking, um, for more, that's already in the process now, and now the borough's asking. And then, then they did not know that we were, there's a huge miscommunication, is what I'm getting at, the initial fifteen thousand. Is gonna be spent on the initial repairs and tear, tear down, there will be no balance to return. This is something from chaos. Um, they said the fifteen thousand dollar deposit will not cover all of the repairs as we knew. The estimate of over forty thousand dollars will be a more realistic number. Um, they went on to say, you know, the truck's in good condition for the age, for the age. This was their statement, the frame and chassis are in great shape, it'll just need some repairs and maintenance that has been neglected for the past several years. They've seen ten-year-old top-of-the-line trucks in worse condition, so the truck is still inside the shop, partially disassembled. It is, I think, my feeling, uh, that we should. Do move forward with giving that check for the fifteen thousand dollars and have an, an amount that we say up to this is what we are approving tonight. Um, I think, George, you had such suggested forty-five thousand.
Yes.
Um, and then we can, you know, circle back and make another decision if. Once we hit that forty-five thousand, you know, what else is, is going on? Um, I still believe that repairing, my belief, repairing the truck makes sense to buy us sometimes. Um, for our next big decisions, you know, I mean, we have coming up discussions about what we need to purchase next. I mean, we just paid for this apparatus study, so I think this gives us time to have real conversations around that, which is kind of our next big hurdle. But.
Well, thank you for the clarification, because I mean, that. Is very clear to me, you know, what we're paying for, what we're going to get, and what you can expect. And it, speaking for myself, it sounds reasonable, I mean, we wanna. Uh, repair it so that we can, if, if I understand you correctly, uh. Do whatever repairs are necessary and within reason, so that we have a functioning truck for as long as we can. While understanding the necessity to replace it with a new. Which will take several years, that's my understanding of what you're saying.
But this repairs, we will be voting, you, you will be making a motion to approve the fifteen thousand dollars. And repairs up to, not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars, that's what I, otherwise, it has to come back to us. So it's not just to make the repairs to make it functioning if it ends up being fifty-five thousand dollars.
Well, or that it works, or we're checking back in at forty-five, right?
At forty-five, not at over fifteen.
Yeah, called that forty-five, yeah, yeah, yes, yes, yes.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Sure.
So, what if, as Taylor begins to do the work, they come back and say. It's probably going to be seventy thousand. What will be our course of action at that point?
I feel like we won't know the difference between forty-five and seventy. But after forty-five thousand dollars worth of repairs are made, what is left to be repaired? Does it, you know, I, that, I don't know, I feel like that is the way I would think about it, but everyone else could say what they would.
Chief, I'd like to know what Chief Lynch thinks, if that's okay. Action make a motion before you continue the discussion of it.
I don't know.
Maybe, yeah, we could, before you do that, there's one point of clarification, if you're, if you will, this is, just so everybody understands, this is based off an actual quote. We have a quote in, in print, everybody should have it. That's what we're basing this off of, the original quote of thirty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars is what was, uh. Prelimarily forecast with a, now is a. Vice President Saltesia has suggested a cap at forty-five, forty-five thousand, so, so there's a roughly a five thousand dollar. Uh, margin in there of the unknown, anything above, above and beyond that, we'll answer back for further discussion. Uh, it may or may not even occur. We expect that some things, because of the age of the truck, as they take things apart, they, they're gonna break, it's, it's, that's fact. Uh, it's probably going to be a little bit higher. Um, because they have to repair things in order to keep going to get in further trouble. Uh, but I don't, hey, honestly, to answer the worst question, I don't really, seventy thousand, then. Or we're not gonna get to that point. Uh, we're all gonna be sitting back here having a very real conversation at the forty, forty-five thousand dollar market, since, and so on. Uh, this is to authorize the process to start, order parts, get going, see what else you need. That's where they, we, we have to start somewhere and start moving forward before we know where we're gonna end. We'll never know where we're gonna end if we don't get started.
This is where I. You don't think it's gonna go about. Forty-five, but you, you, you're.
I'm not gonna say for certain that it's not gonna go about forty-five thousand, we're putting a cap to. The council hopefully is gonna put a cap at forty-five thousand, so that.
He has, mechanic has, he knows where his parameters are. Because in forty five thousand, he's gonna hopefully by that point know. Have another three thousand.
I'm not beating that, follow. And I think I think so, I think I understand it. The council kind of said. We put in forty five thousand and then what? Are they gonna ask, say it needs more? I mean, are we prepared to sometimes, okay, we'll pay that extra more, is it worth paying that extra more?
That's the conversation we're gonna have to have.
Yeah, we'll have that time. I mean, we could come up with them. We can areas, oh, we can worry if it's still chaos, it's not gonna change anything.
I'm trying to understand, I I I'm I'm deciding, I think, I'm leaning to, I'd like to get Bill's. View as well, uh. Yeah, they said this chassis is in good shape, the body's in good shape.
Truck as a whole, all the mechanics of the truck, chassis, if that, all the functional mechanics of the truck are in good. Sound condition. What we're, what we are specifically talking about is the pump, the ability to deliver water out of truck. Go viral, that's what needs to learn. Everything else in that truck, brakes, fires, everything mechanically is sound. Uh Bob Callender, mechanic, has noted that. The truck's in really good shape for the age of it, we've seen trucks committed to ten year market are far worse. Something worth holding on to as long as we can.
Yeah, so to me. What I think. And to thank you for that clarification, it's like, the truck works, it's the pump, the truck. I think what the concern is, well, okay, let's say we cap it at forty five. And we still don't have a functioning truck with the pump, I mean, so. I mean, and I don't know if you can answer that question, but it's sort of like, that's the main concern, it's like. Whatever the cap is, at the end of it, will there be a functioning truck?
Ideally, yes, but I think by the time we hit that, we're gonna have a very clear indication of what's left to go.
Thank you, I appreciate your hearing your answer.
And the, sorry, for me, it's not the case. Where after you break it down, you you come back with a menu of, here are the things I can fix. We have this one objective, just to pump. That's right.
And that would be my objective, yeah, not, not, this isn't uh. An Alphard manual.
Right.
You know, we're we're going all in, ideally to have it completely, because at the end of the day. If the only way we're gonna get less certification is to have it fully functional ways to sign to operate.
Right, and that's what this effort is about, what this effort is about.
Well, as long as you give it back.
Okay, that's almost though. Um, one second. I don't shoot, you know that. I don't see it. Oh wait. Now, it's right here, sorry.
Well, you look, oh, it's on here too.
Okay, I make a motion to approve payment fifteen thousand dollars to Kaler Motors for the quote and repairs. Showed on the quote for not to exceed. Of forty five thousand dollars without some subsequent approval by council.
Second. I I have a motion and a second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor? Uh Manager Lot, please record a unanimous vote.
Want to hear about this, don't forget.
Thank you, everyone. Number seven on the agenda, uh Councilor Pangell.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion to award the contract. For our road paving project contract number twenty four dash oh seven to Glasgow Paving. The apparent low bidder in the amount of one hundred and forty seven. Dollars and wait, one hundred forty seven. Seven hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. Uh waive the R C O review waiting period and to authorize the issuance of the notice to proceed.
Motion and a second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor?
Yeah, it's just um seven hundred and seventy seven dollars.
Okay, thank you. Correct. Um any opposed? Uh Manager Lot, please record a unanimous vote. Okay, um moving on to new business. Alex.
Yes, I'd like us to discuss. Drakeity. The our outdoor fire pit ordinance. We seem to be having, we see complaints about outdoor fire pits. Uh some of them, uh you know, we're a very tight community. We sneeze, the neighbor says not blessed, it's it's just that tight. And with the open fire pits, I think are really a hazard. To to our, to our neighbors, so I'd like us to. Discuss opening up. That or yes.
Matters a lot, isn't that? Already being reviewed by. The um. One of our.
The Environmental Advisory Committee has taken it, um. The person, the person that has an issue with the fire pit, they. Uh and there's a lot of complaints, came to the E A C and spoke with them about it. And um they're going to review the. Put a little more teeth in the ordinance, then come to committee and ask them to uh. Consider it. Uh they've also put a call into the D E P about it to get some advisory. Information on it, why is it put it together?
I I fear, you know, once we get the D E P, that this could really, you know, it could be some fines by the D E P, so just, you know, sooner we get this. Addressed, I think we'll have it.
No, and I know, I know the situation, and I can relate to it, because I live a block away, and I'm affected. That fire pit.
What, that petition required?
Yeah.
It's an ordinance, that's applicable.
Yeah, I mean, I have fire pits in my backyard, but they're very small.
I I believe that we're not referencing a solo stove. Just to, right, just to kind of, I think, well, fears of the community, we're not gonna outlaw things like solo stove.
Right.
That's not what this is aimed at, this is like open burning.
Yeah, this is, yes.
Communities, so we have pictures and videos, which is really.
I think your ordinance should address all. Varieties.
Okay, yes.
So you can't have any.
Can't say like, you can't have like a little marshmallow fire.
You have to have it, it's either approved or not, that's what we're, we're, it's usually. You can do parameters, you can, and I think the E A C is gonna come back with some pretty good suggestions, Steve. So.
And I should, there's, you know, this. It's just, it's. There's one complaint, I mean, there's. Multiple complaints about one.
Single. One, yeah, yeah.
So it's a mission, yes.
Just we're clear all of it, the fire pit question is within. The legal parameters of existing fire code. You're not violating. It's it's exactly where it's supposed to be. Uh you know, this is also applied for the international fire code, it's not quite viral, so. I'm not against. The revision, I'm just making a point of clarification.
Thank you, maybe, maybe it's too big for R ten. Maybe. You know, again, I don't live next door to it, but I can tell you that when I was driving down this trip, I was like, wow, where's that smell?
So I'm, I I've been there every day this week. I I get it, uh when anybody else wants to join, we're just spinning a conversation, but I'm the one being convenient to it all.
Totally understandable. The neighbors, it's it's tough.
Is uh.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other new business and or discussion to bring forward? Uh, oh, yes, can we say thank you to Abington for. You connecting, projecting. Oh, that's correct, yes, yeah, yeah, um so, yeah, last um Thursday, um Abington uh had. The ribbon cutting for the Abington Jenkins Town connection. Which basically connects the, a walking path between our two towns. And um yeah, we played a, we played a hand in that, um over the past, since two thousand seventeen, we've been working on that, and it um. It's finally just about completed, and uh Abington was gracious enough. Uh to invite members of uh Jenkins Town and the council and. And um yeah, it was just a really nice event, and it was uh, it was good, so I, shout out to Abington. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I think. The fact that, basically what happened was that the neighborhood were red rambler, road is that type of thing. Those people can now walk, they walked to the. The Arts Fest, because there was a sidewalk there, and before there was no sidewalk. And and. Then, Abington did this whole thing for a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a host over two million, because they did it in the house.
Wow.
So.
Yeah, they laid about two thousand feet of concrete, just so you know.
Yeah, it's really great, well.
Yeah, it is gonna get close, oh, yeah.
I just wanted to uh. I attended the the seventy fifth anniversary of the Kiwanis, the Jane Kiwanis has been a. A a major part of uh fundraising and and. Um setting up leadership programs for our youth in the the area. Um they also um provided us with some funding to help with our U H F R S security system, so. Um Council partner was there also, so we we repeat our respects and thank them for their contributions to us.
Great. Okay, um motion to adjourn, so all in favor? Okay, thank you, everyone, good meeting.
Thank you, bye.